Can I add something on that? So, you know, sitting here listening to what Bruno was talking about the fees and, you know, getting the data, and I'm not real huge on that stuff because that takes time. Staff is taking it away. So, I get it, but I don't know that it would just be a point of trivia that we now have that curiosity stat by not knowing or not fully doing it. Going through it myself, I think a lot of the decisions that the board makes is based on personal observations and personal experiences. So, I'm just telling you right now, going through any level of development, whether it be, you know, building permit for a house or a project, you know, a few projects working myself, I don't mind. The money part of it is not, it's the discretion, it's the time, the time that it takes. And, you know, let's get to this point, and now we need you to do this. You know, that kind of stuff that does occur, I think those are the things that probably slow or cause people to pause and say, "I don't think I want to go through this." It's a, it's a big process, and I realize, you know, staff is doing, like I said, staff is doing exactly what the board has created in its policies, and that's probably what we need to revisit. Because the 3%, it's not unreasonable. Not when you, I've had, you know, inspectors, you know, come out, and they'll spend an hour, two hours, whatever time they need, and then they're also, you know, driving out there, they're going to report later, it's not just the time. So, there's, there's time, and there's plans examined, and there's catching stuff. And even though you have an engineer or architect, there's still things that are missed, and they need to pick up on them. So, I think the fee is not the big thing, big hangup for me, as much as it is the time for a project to, from the time you apply till the time you get the permit, is probably the biggest issue, single issue that I've experienced, that I've heard from developers too. I don't know, maybe you guys are very different, but I think that's the big thing, the time that it takes.
So, you're talking about the planning process?
Yeah.
So, I think we're the English, the planning division?
Yeah, I think we're seeing.
That is partially general fund. The building division is not. And so, the, the planning division, that end of it, is what takes the most, because that's where projects are subject to CEQA. Building permits on their own are considered ministerial and are not subject to CEQA. But if you fall within the zoning ordinance, you have to apply for a minor use permit or a major use permit, that's a discretionary project, which is subject to CEQA. And so, that's where it takes a lot longer time to get through that because of all the, not only local regulations, but also state regulations that we have to follow.
I think that's where we need to be focusing on how we can give these projects really fast. Because I agree with Supervisor Brown, but I've heard from my constituents, it's, it's the time, it's not the money that they have to put out. A lot of times, we're losing money because the process is taking so long, they haven't got the project finished, and they already have, you know, funding that they borrowed.
Yeah. And the, you know, we come back to economic development, it's, if there's a tiered system, you need the housing, obviously, but housing for what? For people that need jobs. It doesn't do any good if we get, you know, a thousand more Section 8 vouchers, that ideally, it'd be nice to get everybody off of Section 8, where they didn't need it. That would be, that would be nice. It's not realistic, but that ultimately should be our goal. And the way to do that is more businesses, in order to have businesses, and even develop properties that we have that are commercial or, you know, zoned appropriately. And the easiest way to do that is to speed up the process, to get infrastructure. So, it's this tiered process that we need to do, and then we get, I see all these houses going to Kelseyville, how many is that, that project down there by the post office?
There are 50 units.
50 units, yeah. And where are those people working? Are they all going to be Section 8? I mean, that's, those are the things that we, you know, we need a diversity, for sure, but we've got to have businesses coming, we've got to have commercial properties developed in order to sustain all of this, this whole, this whole thing. I go, this is my, always been my mantra, it still is, "We need them worse than they need us," and that's.
So, we're talking about new commercial businesses, new org infrastructure?
Or added on, yeah.
Um, because we don't regulate the, necessarily, these existing commercial businesses, and I have that in my notes, is, if there is an existing business, a new business can go in there without even touching their less, as long as it falls within same zoning guidelines. We don't require business licenses here in the county like cities do. So, we have no way of regulating or tracking where these new businesses are going. So, that's the other thing, if it could be vacant, so, you know, it's kind of outside of what the county does, nobody, in, nobody tracks that I'm aware of, vacant and underutilized facilities. There may be some outside, not any, but.
Realtors do, realtors have, you know, like that, that's important. Chamber of Commerce does. There are resources for that that aren't us, but yeah, you're right. But there are businesses that, you know, as you drive back to Lakeport, you see the Bayshore boat, that was built, because it's an ag zone, it was built as a feed store. It's a boat shop now, there are boats everywhere, but, you know, that, nobody checks on that stuff, nobody follows up with use permit that was initially allowed, so.
So, I want to bring up, before you're done, Michael, I want to bring up 4290, because that is definitely a thorn in our side for development. And it started out that it was a conversation about cannabis, because it's about roads in the middle of nowhere, and I know I spoke to some of your staff, where now it's a problem with housing, including houses that are being rebuilt from a valley fire, that are not being signed off until roads meet standards. So, 4290, sorry, I'm speaking in code, it's a state responsibility area, public resource code, that states what your roads should look like for fire safety and access, for access purposes. I find that it's one of those laws where it's a California state law, and it doesn't fit into every region that California would have thought of maybe when they made this law. I find it really restrictive, and I find that the way that we are applying it is also very restrictive. I would love to see us look at the exemption clause that is in there, where the intent is for safety, it doesn't have to be specifically 10 feet, it doesn't have to be specifically 20 feet, as long as the intent is to do what the law is intended for, which is to provide a public access, or a safe access to the property and safety for the property. There's ways to massage for every project, and it says on there, it's a case-by-case basis. And I would like to see us offer a timeline for them to meet that, so that we can get businesses going, we can get people in their houses, rather than saying, "You have to fix the road before any of those things happen." And I know that's up to us, maybe, to make those policy changes, and to state that this is what we're going to do, but I want us to have this conversation about 4290, because I think it's going to happen more and more if we don't start doing something about it, and we're going to lose out on a lot of development and taxes if we don't do something about it. And it's not just here in Lake County, I've gotten phone calls from many different counties in Northern California, all the way to Central California, 4290 is just an issue, that, that people are bumping into that wall, and there's ways to figure it out, and I want us to figure that out.
So, it's what, back up, I invited Andy, and David is here, but years passed, I'm not sure exactly what it came to be, but 4290 was completely regulated by Cowfire. And I don't know what, what time it became the responsibility of the county to regulate, but it is now. And so, David can talk a little bit more about that, because according to Cowfire, it's regulated by Fire Marshal, which is the chief of the county. And so, go ahead and talk about, a little bit more about 4290, and maybe talk about, from your experience and contact with other counties, is it always a county, or is it Cowfire, and then some of the problems that we're seeing?
Some of the counties I've been, I've been talking to, their regulation of 4290 has been on the petitioners portion of the land. So, their driveways is what, what was being regulated by some counties. I tried to take this kind of thought pattern on time in regards to the exemption process, and with having people come in and give their explanations of why they feel that, that their properties are in compliance, maybe there's an issue with a county road or whatever, whether it's a narrowing in the road, that doesn't necessarily meet black and white standards of 4290, so they put that down, maybe they cross the creek bed or whatever, that's, that's a seasonal creek bed, but it's still daily travel, so they put that down, because that would be a violation of 4290. Those type of things there, I was looking at independently, and gave the decision that I would, I would grant the, the use of property based on, based on those conditions. When I talked to Cowfire about the exemptions that we were putting together, Cowfire was really kind of disagreeable about us providing any kind of exemption. The exemption says that we have to fill the exemption out, and then once we approve it, we give it over to the Cowfire office and we put it on file. And they didn't like that, they wanted us to be black and white with 4290. I contacted Sacramento, Sacramento was giving us some options regarding the 4290, but when I asked for something in writing, they said, "No, we can't give you the writing." And then Andy contacted Sacramento, and that's a different department, and the department he talked to got very rigid about the requirements of 4290. So, we're, we've been kind of running into a block ball with everything that we've been trying to do, to be more lenient, to be more, more effective, but helping people get back onto their property. My personal feeling on this is, if a, if a property had a structure on it before, and it was lost from a fire, they should be allowed to go back like for life to what they had on the property, regardless of state regulations. We should be able to, if somebody was living there before, then they have a right to go back on their property.
But that's, that's inconsistent with Cowfire regulations.
That's inconsistent with Cowfire regulations, yes.
And, and I want to clarify, we don't require people to pave any of their roads unless they're exceeding a certain percentage, but we don't have the expertise to reinforce and 4290 roads, so I'm not sure.
Yeah, we just made sure that if a public's aggregate is on the road, so it exceeds 60% on, on elevation, at that point, it has to become a hardback, and then it has to go to a road standard. But commercial use, we, we found that commercial use of properties or those, of what, have to be in compliance with 4290 road standard. So, if you have a private use road, and only has a dimension of 10 feet, because there's a commercial use, at the end of that rainbow, they have to have the road standard, which is now 20 feet, where they have to meet all the turnouts and turnarounds and all that. You know, we're, it's a challenge, we're still, we're still fighting that battle, and seeing where we can go with it, but at some point, it'll be something we will have to bring to the supervisors, get a decision from the supervisors.
So, I, I want us to have the further discussion, I don't think we're going to hash it out here today, but either next week or the following week, I want to bring this to the supervisors, we need to fix this sooner or later, we can't hold on on any kind of development to get signed off. I, from everything that I'm reading, I, I'm going to politely disagree, it's up to us, as long as the intent is there, for public safety. And I'm not going to let the state regulate what we can and can't develop, when we have everything in writing saying it's up to us to make that decision as to public safety. Obviously, we're going to have to go through our county council to make the final decision of, does this put us in, in an awkward liability, or does this cover us? Because we can't just make any willy-nilly decision, it has to at least show the intent to, to follow those rules. But I, I just think.
Just like I need to have, if people would like to come.
Yeah, I can't say, you're right, you're not speaking about ignoring the requirements of 4290, you're talking about looking at what some jurisdictions have called exceptions and/or deviations from certain requirements, but it's always based upon the, the same practical effect. And that's where you go back to what Supervisor Scott Davis was talking about, in terms of the intent of these regulations, because it's the intent of these regulations that tell you what the intended effect is, and whether you can accomplish it. I suggest it does not be done piecemeal, there has to be an overall fire safety plan that's going to address these things, and it is on a case-by-case basis, but there are going to be certain standards, there are going to be certain criteria that are going to be on the table, that we report to consider, as opposed to some things that are just deal breakers. There, it's, if, if this can be streamlined for 80 to 85% of the population, that would be great, if there's no panacea, no magic pill that's going to address every single circumstance. And there are some ideas on how to present this, not only to your board, but even to the state, because jurisdictions are struggling with this, especially those jurisdictions that are recovering from fire. And it's not a question of attempting, again, to sidestep or avoid the, the law or fire safety regulations, it's finding ways that, we're talking about having an overall practical effect, that's where the case-by-case comes from, because a practical effect is just that, and practical takes into account all of the circumstances, including disaster, what's been there before, topography, locations, et cetera. And there are ways, and we've seen this in other jurisdictions, and in fact, I believe that you go, you realize, you can employ some of these in terms of, all right, if, if you can't do X, we're going to have you do more of Y, because you'll balance it out, they have the same overall practical effect. It's, it's not going to be simple to do, but I do think the regulations, at least in some sections of these regulations, which have not been changed for 2020 to some degree, do give you at least a planning flexibility, and I think it would present it right to the state, subject first to the board's approval, that there, there would be some maneuvering room, and maybe even a model there.
And I will add that some of our roads, county roads, are some of the issues for development, where you can't do a development because the county road doesn't meet 4290. We need, we need to get past that, in my opinion, we need to get past that. If, it should, a developer should not be in harm's way of not doing a project because our roads don't meet it. We need to try to get our roads to meet it, we need to maybe have a timeline of when we plan to get to it, but to stop a project because of us, if we're having an economic development conversation, that should never be the reason it's not happening because of us.
You know, I know we got everybody here, like, everybody is busy for the whole day, and we know that, and we appreciate you said that earlier very much for you being here. So, I know Michael went first, I know we have a lot of quicks, but, you know, I think, Michael, what we're talking about in, in discretion and helping move forward, I think all board members have different concerns, but we've got a lot of folks around the table that would really like to get moving, moving along. I think the board is agreement with that, it's 10:30 now almost, so, you know, obviously we could spend the whole eight hours here, but I know we want, a lot of stuff needs to be done, so, we've got around, we move, move along here.
I, I just, I am, I'm speaking as a member of the public now, not a department head, but.
You should be sitting up there.
I, I, it's on the housing thing, and I'm wondering, I'm not sure how this is done, but how does the county go about incentivizing creative-thinking developers that have different ideas about housing? Like, I'm thinking cohousing, there's a lot of, there's a lot of stuff going on out there that is looking at different generations of people and how they live, rather than just the single-family house or an apartment building?
The board recently, over the last two years, has, has done that. There's been a ton of, of planning, it's not, it's not regulation, because that's actually restricted, less restricted, where you can do second home, granny units, small homes.
Smallish work footage?
There's been a ton of stuff that has been done in that regard.
And we also discussed the cake class, which is kind of.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I think the multi, multi-house community is in that.
Yeah.
I also want to say that the state just approved a new accessory dwelling unit, and we have the new laws on that, where it actually takes the discretion out of our hands, as far as if somebody wants to build a third unit on the inside of their house or their garage.
Like an apartment-type?
Yeah, we have to allow a second unit, and they can build a third unit.
Can, can that be, we're still restricted by, the, the, the reason I'm asking this is.
Lot size or anything like that?
No, the whole one is still sufficient.
Nope, it says no. And the, and the laws that came down.
Good luck with that, you guys. All right, Michael, thank you very much, appreciate it. Can I ask you a question?
You're talking about like the multifamily, like apartment complexes and things like that?
Well, you read a lot about different things, like, there's cohousing that includes workspace, I'm thinking of what's the workforce going to look like in the future, and retirement communities, where there's a lot of retired people moving to places that are cohousing, where they have shared kitchen, you know, there's a lot of different models out there that are not traditional models, they're like, you know, I mean, you were talking about being outside the box, and I'm wondering about, if you're looking at the future, that the whole issue of housing, and what is housing, and combining housing with work, is just revolutionizing now. And, and I'm wondering, I'm just wondering about that, you know, how you, how to look at that, you know, what is the housing and work model? They seem to be more intersecting, especially with young people, and how do you, how do you get developers or people who do this to come do it?
Well, right now, in this, you know, we consider single-family dwelling has one kitchen, now multiple people, we don't regulate who can live in that place, and so, and then we also have a home occupation permitting process, and that's been resubstained.
I'm not, yeah, I'm talking about.
She was talking outside the box, like, stores, container housing, and, right, like, different types of housing and.
There's just a whole revolution now, I mean, about different ways of living and working, and types of things that, you know, are, you know, it, it's just, it's like a whole different wave, like, retired people who don't want to buy just another base, they want to live in a, not just the standard Del Webb, but like maybe a multi-unit where they have a sort of co-op living situation, and they support each other, where there's young people who, who live and work together, like a lead work, with inside their home, inside the building, and they care.
So, there's no financial incentives for that, that I am aware of, there is some bonus density if they meet certain criteria and.
But they're allowed to do it, that, I mean, the incentive is, there's inventory of property that's all appropriate for that.
I'm talking about attracting people like that, and that's why I said, I don't know who's in charge of that, I mean, I don't think it would be you guys, it would be, how this county advertised, this is what we'd like to have, come here.
I actually had the opportunity, yesterday, I went down to Santa Rosa and visited one of those kind of homes you're talking about.
So, you understand what I'm talking about?
Tiny little homes that had one area that had laundry room and kitchen, and it was used by all the people in that community.
Yeah, there's so much of that.
And we're actually, this was a Hope Rising group that went down, and we're actually attempting at that kind of model to help with our homeless population, so.
So, so we have that available, and now that model in migrant housing, some of the newer migrant housing, green night hole, with the kitchen, laundry room, all that kind of stuff, we have that, you're looking for that area, we have more permanent.
Only, only, you know, for a range of different kinds of potential customers.
I, I think it fits in what we were talking about earlier, about the 3%, can we reduce that, it's just always kind of looking out what a possible incentive that we can create. And so, I think that, that just fits within that competition as well.
So, just to go back, there was a time many years ago, where the board supervisors did approve an incentive, where, this was only planning fees, had nothing to do with building permits, but the board, if you were creating new jobs, they, they planned these, and again, that's because planning division is partially our company. There was a time where that was.
All right, like I said, you know, we've got a lot of folks, I think, at least that like having a conversation as we move forward in this, what I'd like to do now is, there are some refreshments, we could take just a five-minute break, we could take, take restrooms, there is some refreshments back there, then get right back to it and move along, so. I'm going to keep you guys, I don't think none of us do, we know how hard you guys have worked, so, try to move along. So, me, you know, I know, like I said, we know you're very busy, very busy as department heads, and so, we're trying to get you some things, but most people have set up meetings after lunch, most likely, just because they knew the time. So, we're trying to just go down the line, get some discussions happening, if you have to go, we understand, I think from the board's standpoint, we know how hard everybody's working, but hopefully we go through, get some conversations happening a little bit quicker here, and ideas on some of the initial discussions. But we'll go ahead and open the meeting back up, and we've just kind of worked around the table here, and Sheriff, if you would like to start?
Sure, for the benefits of sitting next to you.
Yeah.
Well, I'll start out first by thanking the board and County Director for putting this together, to get the exchange of ideas here, I think everybody in here has some, brings some really good ideas to the table, everybody in here is smart, including the public, and together, we're going to be smarter than any of us individually. Looking forward to hearing any community input that we have, I just want to touch on some of the things that I've heard along the way, seem to be, to be pointing towards opportunities to succeed in the future. EJ talked about town hall and volunteers, this is, for the members of the public, this isn't something that the county's going to be able to do on its own, we do need helping the other community in those volunteer projects, the, that was the animal thing project, those types of things that improve our resiliency and benefit our community are things that need to continue. Time and time again, Eric Staffing mentioned here, I had the opportunity to have a meeting with Supervisor Crandall and Supervisor Spatia last week, and one of the things we were talking about is our staffing levels, officer safety issues, and those types of things. Going through some, to put things in perspective, I went through an annual report that was created by Sheriff Ed Anderson in 1973, and in that report, he described the number of deputy sheriffs that he had assigned to detectives and patrol during 1973, and that number was 30. Today, we are 32, so I can guarantee you, demands and the workload has increased since 1973 in the sheriff's office, and our workload is essentially remaining the same. And we have 32 now, two of those full resource officer positions. So, essentially, the general fund positions remain the same as they were in 1973. Certainly, between then and now, we've had some ups and downs, but I just thought that was an interesting perspective to look at, what we're doing within the public safety domain. In, in looking at these efforts to improve services, I think the most important thing, Lake County is not going to become the center for industry, we're not going to have any big industry that comes in here, I just don't see that happening. What I see is Lake County becoming the bedroom community for the north end and for Napa. In many cases, we're a bedroom community in the south, picking the south end of the county, and to a, a little bit more extent, maybe at the north and the, the west shores, but we're becoming a bedroom community, and we need to start looking like we're a bedroom community, we want to take advantage of those opportunities. As department heads, during the various emergencies that we've had, I had an opportunity to address everybody's work at UOC, and we really got to work well in those emergency situations, and what I found during those situations, that everybody that was in that UOC was there for a reason. What I will share with you as department head is, you're in your position for a reason, with the supervisor, you're in there for a reason, because people have confidence in your ability to do the job. And when it comes time to making those changes that we need to make to start looking the way we should, start making those changes in policy that have been in place for many, many years, that may have been a hindrance, and are certainly a result of why we're in the situation today, when it comes time to make those changes, let's get, let's get on it, let's get after it. Let's look at what some successes look like. We've had some programs at the sheriff's office, and again, these all take staffing, we need the people to be able to do it, so I'll say to the board, is we can't provide new services without people, I mean, we need staff members in these positions, we need to be able to fill positions. I mean, I cry about that all the time at the board supervisors meeting, and what I will say is that the board supervisors has implemented some policies and made some changes to our hiring practices that have given us the ability to attract quality employees. Our staffing levels are starting to become up, we're starting to bump up on that staffing level, we're going to have, I mean, almost all of our funded positions filled, we'll probably be asking for some more here soon. What brought us there at the sheriff's office, changes, offering of the hiring incentive, the $5,000 hiring incentive. Apparently, clearly, the police department thought that was a great idea, because they're offering $15,000 hiring incentive, and it's becoming a standard. So, we need to start looking at what other agencies are doing that are, that are being successful and implementing those programs. We opened up our training program, where we started out offering county employees the opportunity to go to the police academy and become deputy sheriffs. We expanded that to open up to members of the public, and what that resulted in, from maybe a year or two ago, when we opened recruitment, we might get five, six, seven applications for 15 positions, we had 83 applicants apply, and we were able to choose from the cream of the crop, and we currently have four people that are attending the academy, and one that's going to be at the academy April. So, those things that the, the board has done, those changes that the board has, has made, have allowed my department to enjoy a, a little bit of success. We translated that into some programs that we'd like to expand out, working with community development. Some of the board members may be aware, some of the members of the public may be aware, but got the idea, reached out to Michael, and we're talking about discretion, this is great that she had the discretion and ability to do this. We paired up a code enforcement officer with a deputy sheriff once a week, and they go out and they address problems that have a kind of a commonality, community development slash law enforcement issue. And both, both the deputy and the code enforcement officer identify problems, whether it comes in from community complaints, whether it's on-use stuff, where there might be an issue where somebody's got a whole bunch of junk cars in the yard, and they're also suspected of selling drugs, and they apparently go in and they address those issues, and they've had a lot of success in that, and we're going to continue doing that. Again, to look at, I think we really need to look at what, what things have been successful. Um, again, to look at, I think we need, really need to look at what, what things have been successful, um, without, within our community and outside of our community, and start to emulate those things and make like that. These projects that I'm hearing, the sewer, County White Sewer Project, to attract people to come in and build those houses. Supervisor Brown's right, we've got fifty homes going on council, but now where are they working? Um, meaning the businesses to come in as well. Um, that's about all I have.
I got a question. I know, I don't know about Ed Anderson, but I know at the end of, the next is, is successor Ray Navitas at the end of his term, um, there were, there were thirty, um, employees or thirty deputies, but twenty-two of them were reserves. So, we lost all that. That, that was a huge hit for us, just like, you know, we lost inmate, and I know this sounds kind of funny, but it's a reality. We rely on this stuff. We, we lost all of our inmate crews to work on the roads and do all this stuff, and the state legislation was passed that made crime legal. And so, so, you know, so that's, that's an issue. Can, will we ever be able to get back? Because I know the train, the training requirements for reserves is, you know, something that just can't be...
Yeah, um, there was a couple of things that came along. There was a, and you'll refer to you for this, there was a Garcia decision that had to do with having people volunteer for positions that you normally pay them for. I think that had an impact. The post-regulations, which we don't control here, um, that, that dictate what a person, what kind of training a person has to go through to become a reserve, to be a full-functioning reserve, like we were able to have back into the seventies and eighties, uh, even up into the nineties. Yeah, you could, um, you didn't have to have all the training. Essentially, to go out there and do the work that those, um, employees were doing back then, you have to go through a full police academy, nor are we going to ask anyone. Um, the, the laws, people get what you vote for. When you vote for these things, when you vote for things called the Neighborhood, the Safe Neighborhoods, the Communities Act, when, as you described it, we legalize crime. If you have a littering problem in your community, and there's litter all over the place, and littering's a crime, everybody recognizes that, and you pass a law that says, yeah, littering's no longer illegal. You should not litter in your community, but you've reduced crime. Okay, some of these laws, people, people really need to start looking at them and, and examining what they're being asked to vote on, and, and start calling your, your elected representatives that make these laws at state level and, and holding them accountable, and your voice, because they affect us at a local level.
So I have a question for you. If, uh, there was consensus to create an economic development task force, and we found specific areas to focus on, how can your department help us? Would they be able to maybe put an emphasis on patrolling that area to try and reduce the crime or the blight? Uh, and I guess the question goes back to Michaelin, as well as code enforcement, able to do a focus as well to, can we focus to make sure that investors have all the wants of wanting to spend their money here because we're providing a little bit of extra oomph in order for that development to occur?
If there's, if it's a sustainable program, I think that would be successful, which means that you have to have the funding for this. Right now, I'm working at levels where we're providing the bare minimum. We've done away with such things as, we don't have a drug task force, I have one person that's assigned that, um, basically narcotics and marijuana unfortunately.
But as you stated, drugs are no longer a crime.
Right, yeah, drugs are no longer a crime. So we're shifting our focus... Right, and there's still work for him to do. He's, he's busier than heck by himself, but, um, as far as a task force notion, it just simply doesn't exist. And there's other things that we would like to be doing, uh, more of those proactive things. But again, it comes back to staffing, you got to have the staffing levels to be able to support that. I'd love to have a homeless task force, correct somebody in social services. I'd love to be able to correct somebody for mental health. Mental health has people that are willing to go out and walk, which we in fact do, uh, on some, uh, some occasions, we just don't have the, the staffing for right now. We've cut twenty, twenty-two positions, uh, from our budget during the last, um, the last budget, uh, and when we start getting those back, we'll be able to start doing some of those programs and make them, uh, make it more attractive for businesses coming in.
So what I heard was, other than staffing, yes, you would be able to provide some, some...
And just to, uh, talk a little bit about that as well, same thing would go for code enforcement. Right now, we have three code enforcement officers, and certainly, we could dedicate a code enforcement officer to focus on one area, but that will be pulling them away from all the other areas in the county.
Well, and, you know, there's some, something to be said about targeting an area though. You know, and instead of the shotgun approach of, let's just go out and we're going to do a little bit, let's, let's focus, we could, you know, we could focus on our area, you know, really give it some attention. We've done that in the past, and other things, very effective. Absolutely. Because other counties, even though they're not getting hit, they're going, you know, we, we, we're next.
No, I, and I agree with you, but just as long as the public is there, and you don't want to hear complaints, well, you're not taking care of this area, well, we're focusing our efforts in, in this area.
I, I see it as, if you grab a grain of sand from every beach in California, you'll see no difference, but if you start scooping sand out of one beach, then you're going to see an impact. And, and I feel like we're just, we're, we're doing our best, we're really hard.
Yeah, I'll tell you, the sheriff's office had such a practice in place, probation chief Rob Howe was in charge of the Community Recovery Task Force that focused on the North Shore, particularly Clear Lake Oaks, and it, it did make a difference. But again, what I, what I go back to is it needs to be sustainable. It can't be some, you go in there and you fix it and then just walk away from it, because it's not going to stay that way. So whatever we come up with needs to be sustainable, there needs to be a permanent funding source available that's going to continue happening. You can't go in there for, you know, for a month, or six weeks, or two or three years, and expect it to hold up. You got to be willing to dedicate those resources, and these, these changes need to be permanent. It can't be, you have thirty deputies, uh, doing, doing a certain function in nineteen seventy-four, and flash forward to twenty-twenty, you have thirty. And it can't, you're not going to change.
All studies show that good economies are based on stability and predictability. If we do something for one week or one month, everything's going to change and revert back to what it was. If we can show that it's stable and it's going to be predictable, then people are going to want to invest. That's what we have to create.
Yes, Coleman?
I just kind of piggybacking on the, on the, uh, the blight issue. I've, I've had experience in the past working with, with, uh, that put-in place, if there was a severe problem down south with, with the neighbors. We visually see crossing, across a, a city line, went from one city to the next, the difference from one city to the next, based on, on, uh, enforcement of those cities. Programs were put together for property maintenance, to go out boots on the ground, to go to these different properties, and not to bring properties up to a new standard, but to bring properties up to a well-maintained standard, to get rid of some of the trash, to get rid of some of the debris, to get pride and ownership back into properties. Uh, most of the problems were with rental properties. People that rent properties have no, no, no skin in the game per se, because it's not their property. So if you have the, the county, which are the enforcing agency, assisting holders to maintain their properties, it, it helps maintain that, that, that standard of living. It also becomes an invitation for people to come in and want to develop an area, because now they've got an area that actually is, is going to be, uh, uh, an investment for them and not a deficit.
Thank you, Sheriff. Just kind of go around here, doesn't have to be law and political station.
Okay, so, good morning, I'm Crystal Markatan, Director of Social Services, for those of you who don't know me. Um, as I was listening to this, um, it really, uh, made me think about a study that was commissioned last year through California Welfare Directors Association of California's smallest counties in California and their economies. Um, and what it really said is, uh, uh, and there was a specific, um, report for Lake County. And with Lake County, um, the economy, um, was really focused on it, it being a bedroom community for Bay Area, but that it really was tied to quality of life, and so that people would make a decision to move here because they have a better quality of life. And I think that, um, you know, some, there's work to be done there in terms of cleaning up the county a little bit, creating more, um, um, more homes to actually attract that, um, population. But I think there's a lot of things, there's more things already going for Lake County to draw in that population than there are against Lake County. And I think one of the things that would be really helpful with that, I mean, I'll let you expand on it, but one of the things is a lot of people do work from home now. And so, the fact that we do not have, um, good internet access in this county, I think is a huge detriment, and one of the things that, um, would make an amazing difference. Um, so at Social Services, we do workforce development, um, we have programs to help people become employed, and we also pay CalWorks, so aid for people who, um, do, uh, have the ability to be employed at present time. And then also, we, um, provide CalFresh, which is, uh, it's the old food stamp, so it's a nutrition program. And so, right now, you know, we're putting in over $10 million in the local economy through those two programs. But the ideal is that people become self-sufficient over time, and that's the idea of the program, but it's also, you know, what we're constantly working for. And I think, um, having more employers available here to help, you know, people make that transition, um, would be really amazing. And so, as people move in from the outside, you would assume that there would be more businesses that would be opening here, and that would be, um, more achievable. So, one of the things that I feel really passionately about, and I think it has a huge effect on, um, just the quality of life here, but also the economy, absolutely everything in this community, is, um, how we treat our kids. And I am a First Five Commissioner, and then also the Director for Child Welfare Services. Um, and what we know about trauma, um, and those first five years, and also the enriching activities that kids are provided in those early years, makes an amazing difference. And even when you have been, are born into a family of generational poverty and collect, um, those things can be overcome if we provide the services that, um, help ameliorate those kind of early, um, experiences in a child's life. And I, I do feel that First Five and the programs that are operating through First Five are making a huge difference here. I've worked in another county with First Five, and I really, um, just support that effort, and I think that, um, it's something that, um, people, if, if you have contact with the family who has chosen Zero to Five, or, um, you want to know more about it, there's a, a great website, and ways to, um, be involved in that. Um, and then also, I have Section Eight Housing, as Carol mentioned earlier, and then, um, in the Governor's new budget, there was a lot of housing money that is coming down through Department of Social Services. And, you know, that's good and that's bad. Um, we don't really have a lot of housing stock, and so, while we want to apply for the housing money, because you have to make a decision to apply as for target populations, we already have, I think, four housing programs through Department of Social Services that focus on specific target populations. The ones that we, the one that we, uh, currently have is for CalWorks, the people who are on CalWorks and, um, uh, transitioning off of CalWorks. And, uh, we have a contract with NCO to house the, housing for those people, and amazingly, they have mostly found housing. And so, um, we have a little different experience in Section Eight where people do have difficulty locating housing, not all of that, which are always leased out. But as Carol pointed out, that program is usually expensive for us, because we do have to use realignment funds for the administration, or at least part of the administration of that program. Um, but the new programs coming down will focus on, one will be for seniors, one is families that have child welfare, um, have, have worked with child welfare, and our kids are reuniting with their parents. And then also, one for people who are SSI eligible, but because of the comp, the complexity of the process to get SSI, they aren't able to actually walk through that process. And so this housing will provide assistance for them to get SSI, but then also provide funding for the housing. And so all of that, um, not all the target populations, but those are the ones that are coming to mind now, but I think that, um, housing stock is the one thing that we absolutely will need if we apply for and make those housing programs available in this community. Um, and, you know, I guess I, I really should mention, uh, the senior and disabled population in Lake County is very disproportionate to the actual county's population. And so, it's finding ways for, um, us to serve that population, meet the needs of the communities, and also the needs of, um, that population. And I think a good example of that, um, where, you know, special things are required is, in the PSPs, we have a, we have a disproportionate number of people who rely on our medical equipment that requires power. And so how do we meet the needs of those people while at the same time, you know, not, um, spending all the money that, you know, we have at our discretion to spend? And so, that's something that, along with public health, we're looking into, you know, what are the things, who we, you know, ask for funding to help with that. If they do live here, they are citizens, and, um, we need to build a plan to, uh, make them feel safer. That's really all I have.
Thank you very much. You know, like I said, we want to get around, so we're going to keep to three minutes or less, as we've got to move around. I know some of the revenue generating departments might, a little bit more, um, you know, specific, I know, going on there, can't like go for a while, but, uh, if we could just move through that process.
I'm Gail Woodworth, I'm the Director for Child Support Services. And I think for us, the biggest thing, um, hindrance that we're finding that, um, I hope that can be addressed, is the whole internet connectivity issue. I mean, in my office, we have a dedicated line straight to the state, so our internet connection is fabulous. But the customers that we serve, more and more, all have a cellphone, and they want to do business here. They don't want to come into our office, they don't want, you know, to have, take time out of their day. So the state child support has really been, um, pushing, um, towards a lot of technical solutions. Um, very soon, we're going to be able to text, we already email, um, although you can still call us, and we'll send you a paper application. You can go to our website, and you can fill out that application online, you can upload your documents. You can't make it to court because you don't want to take a whole day off work, but courts now allow you to call in. Um, so we're doing all these things to, you know, give people, make their time their time, not have to take off work and do those things. But in Lake County, we find our, the biggest hindrance is, well, I don't have internet, I don't have a computer. We've worked with Christopher, we have our child support icons on his computer in the library, so people can go there and do their child support business. But, um, the state is really looking to, for someone to be able to do everything they want to do, pretty much in child support, on, on their smartphone. Um, and so, in Lake County, to do that, we are going to have to have, um, better, um, internet and, um, Wi-Fi for people to use. And, um, they were talking, you know, about these communal housings where you can, you know, work and live. Well, if you want to pull those kind of people in, who they want to get out of the city and they want to come live here, we have to have a really good internet service for them to be able to work from home. Because my husband worked from home off and on this last couple of years, we had high-speed internet, but it wasn't always high-speed. And so I think we really have to address that problem, um, as we, you know, move forward, if we want to try to pull some of these groups of people in.
So, uh, can I pick something up on that? Yes, always. Second time it's come up, and I just got to, you know, I don't want to feel like the wet mic at all time, but, you know, we talk about infrastructure, we talk about county-provided services, water, sewer, um, public safety, things like that. And the frustration with what you're talking about is we don't do that. We've supported it, we've encouraged it, we've tried to do everything we can, but we can't provide it. And it's just, there's, there's a lot of time that can be spent saying, we need to do this, we need to do that. The reality is we don't, can't, we don't have the ability to do that. That's a market-driven service that's provided, and if there's no money to split, if there's no, uh, benefit for these, uh, you know, MediaCom, the competition for MediaCom, actually, and others, because MediaCom's already here. But if there's no competition and no drive for that, it is what it is. And I don't know, you know, we can talk about it all we want, but it's not part of our, the county of Lake infrastructure that we provide, so, um, we have that discussion. We, we talked about it, we had the Dick Once Policy discussion that we had, and, you know, we encouraged that, but the reality is, same as holds. We say, we need housing, we need housing, but we don't build houses. So all we can do is provide, uh, opportunities for those in the private sector to come in and do those things. And I think we've, I think we've done that. I don't think there's, there's not a, I can't think of, um, of a time that MediaCom or ATT or, or anybody else has said, we just can't deal with the county of Lake. We can't deal with planning, we can't deal with the roads department, we can't, I haven't heard that from, from any of you. So I don't think it's the county holding that up, I think it's the market.
So, just to add to that, there is a... So, just to add to that, there is a master broadband plan that has been worked on and is pretty much ready to go to the board supervisors. That would allow for grants to expand and deploy more broadband internet, high-speed broadband internet to areas that, because of the markets, it's not cost-effective for them to reach out to those very remote locations. Some of our areas that don't have access to high-speed are not necessarily remote, and that would help also to increase it, and that would give it access to multiple IPS, not just MediaCom or AT&amp;T as well. And that would not be funded through us, that we're just, we're working with a consortium who would be doing the grant processing for us and helping out with the deployment part. So there's stuff that we can do to make it a little bit more incentivized and a little bit more possible to happen.
We've never shown.
No, we haven't said no, and we're still working on more ways to say yes. But us supporting is definitely not what we're looking at either. And I agree that it's about setting up the platform for the private sector to take advantage of the platform.
Collaboration partnerships.
I was just going to ask, for like MediaCom, during the PSPS events, you know, everyone was down, because MediaCom was down with them. If they're a franchise service provider for the county, so they have a contract with the county for that, can that come, that's looked in for the future, to require them to have, you know, to look at that long-term investment of providing backup power for their system, so that those things are available during emergencies.
Then you go back to the market. I think they were, I mean, Sean, several times.
They were, they were generated too expensive to maintain.
Yeah. We can ask, we can ask them to do it, we can provide funding for one of their customers, I suppose, but to require, try to be like, you know, require a gas station, you have to stay open, people can get it, and then they have.
You know, work on some way to help them.
I know they want to, because they're not making money if they're not operating.
Good suggestion. Definitely look into. All right, thank you.
I'll keep mine fairly short. Just to emphasize, you know, property tax basically pays for, on the county budget, pays fifty-five percent, fifty-five percent in given year of the county budget, not counting the schools, not counting the fire districts, all that tax provides. That comes through my department, starts in it. We are based on a rebuild, we've been on rebuilding the last five years through a lot of training, kind of our system's stabilizing. But we've got a month's long, probably about five years to really get back to where we should have been. But I can tell you, I got a little bit of perspective, because when people come to our office asking for values on their properties to go down, they usually bring up a couple of different reasons. And some of the reasons have already been said here, and I won't go back into broadband, but they bring up all the times, water and water, they bring up, you know, the ability to look up through the sewer system, and they bring in the, on top of the broadband. And so, those are things I see all the time, I hear that all the time, when people are looking for value reductions in their properties. And so, that's, I'm boot on the ground with the, up to those conversations. I will tell you, I'll only say a few more things from my MBA, and most of my career has been in the private industry, working with businesses, I've been in finance ever since my twenties. People don't come to someplace if there isn't the access to do the business. If you cannot get your business services across the road, you don't have proper sewer, you don't have proper water, you can't communicate with their customers through broadband or whatever it might be, they're not going to show up, for whatever reason, they're going to go elsewhere. And honestly, economies of scale is what matters. When you're building a water plant, and I'm no expert on this, I'm just telling you from the business side, where I've been around most of my life, it needs to be big enough. You don't build just enough, because it probably costs you X amount to build a small plant, and a little bit more, and build a bigger plant, and access. I know that's either said and done, but economies of scale, if property's a lot less, or that's additional unit, then building just enough, which is probably why we have a water and water tournament, but that's about where I'll leave it. But I'm just telling you, that's what I hear a lot of times, when people come to my office and we're asking for value reduction. In all honesty, the market's been reflexive. So if there is a water and water tournament area in the valley, they cannot build, and there's, you know, the ability to have it, but the system itself locally cannot handle it, the values of those properties will be down. If the water can go, and the sewer is there, and the roads are there, the values will go up, people will build, and the values will reflect it in that area.